From Councilman Wynn, followed by the pledge, if you are pleased to hear it.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day you've granted us. Bless our mayor, the city council, our city manager, the dedicated men and women who work for the city of Tyler. Please be with our first responders, the men and women of our police and fire department as they keep our community safe. Be with the men and women of the military, provide an extra layer of protection over them as they do their work. Have mercy on all of us who live and work in Tyler and Smith County, and grant that all the people of our nation may give thanks to you. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, we have a different attorney with us up here today, James Craig. Were you a DJ?
No, sir.
Said that pledge very well.
Oh, thank you.
We'll start off with the minutes from May the 8th, 2024.
Moved to approve.
Got a motion by Wynn, seconded by McKellar, also, favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. P1, Aaron.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I am here today to tell you about 2023 for Keep Tyler Beautiful, give you a little snapshot of some highlights from last year. Twenty-nine years ago, Keep Tyler Beautiful actively contributed to the, or for twenty, my past 29 years, Keep Tyler Beautiful has actively contributed to the well-being of our community. Each year, we aim to engage citizens by educating and encouraging active participation in enhancing Tyler sustainability. We proudly receive national support from Keep America Beautiful as a President Circle affiliate and state affiliation with Keep Texas Beautiful. Today, I ask council to accept our 18th consecutive Keep Texas Beautiful Gold Star Affiliate Award. It's a pretty prestigious award from Keep Texas Beautiful. It's based in our commitment to beautification, waste reduction, positive partnership, our youth education, and event participation. You can see on this slide some of the requirements to be a Gold Star Affiliate. We have achieved all of those. In addition, we receive President Circle affiliation with Keep America Beautiful. We hosted 12 community events. We participated in six others, coordinated 11 programs, and between myself and our board and some of our staff, we completed over 50 hours of continuing With our litter abatement program, we prioritize community involvement and awareness across Tyler. For the Great Tyler Cleanup last year, we saw 561 volunteers clean up nearly 2,800 pounds of litter across 17 locations here in Tyler. Our Adopt a Spot program saw nearly 2,000 volunteers clean up more than 10,000 pounds of litter. This was in an estimated 432 miles of roadway and 852 acres of green space. This includes all three college campuses, 18 parks, and 37 streets that are currently adopted. We continued our partnership with Andrews Diversified. They clean up 116 additional miles of roadway on a bi-monthly schedule. This program provides job training for individuals with a diverse variety of specialized needs and helps clean higher-traffic roadways that need more regular attention. Our Beauty in the Box program that started in 2016 saw six new box wraps in 2023, with our 100th wrap being done in January of this year. Our Sixth Annual Park Service Day, which is hosted every September, saw 17 projects completed across five different locations by 180 volunteers. Other beautification projects include our Project Daffodil Bulb Sale. We sold 13,750 daffodil bulbs, and we added native wildlife, a wildflower mix this year, and we sold 62 pounds of that as well. All of those items are planted in Tyler or in the Smith County area. We partnered with our urban forestry department and Tyler Trees Committee to host the Arbor Day and Seedling Giveaway, with nearly 600 trees planted by volunteers in 2023 and over 2,000 seedlings giving away at the Seedling Giveaway. Our Tyler Against Graffiti program, which has a hotline and allows online reports as well, we aim to cover graffiti within 72 hours of that report. We saw 127 tags across Tyler last year at 63 different locations. Since 2019, our first mural that Keep Tyler Beautiful did at the Hillside Art Wall, we've completed 17 murals, with seven of those being done last year. We added a new panel wall at South Side Park. We did the third round of the Hillside Art Wall with 19 panels that are changed out every two to three years. And then we did new restroom murals at Nobly Young Park, two at Lindsay Park on the softball side, one at Pollard Park, and one at P.T. Cole Park, which was actually a community painted mural that was finished at our grand opening. Some of y'all participated in that. Keep Tyler Beautiful has a commitment to waste reduction, and it's seen in a variety of our events and programs. Last year, we hosted the inaugural Earth Day Festival, and we had hundreds of residents and visitors come to Bergfeld Park last April. We had local artisans, environmental education booths, recycling opportunities, a touch-a-truck event with fire, solid waste, and transit involved, yoga in the park, food trucks, and sustainable kids activities like decorating reusable tote bags to take home. Some of our recycling events included Paint Recycles Day, which is a biannual event. This year, in 2023, we had 7,525 pounds of paint collected. That means that these, this paint was properly disposed of and not put in the landfill. The collection event cost $25,000, which was paid for entirely by grant funds from East Texas Council of Governments and Keep Tyler Beautiful donations. In November, we hosted the Tyler Recycles Day event. That's in conjunction with America Recycles Day. We partnered with Solid Waste, Arthotech Shredding, and Interstate Battery to collect 5,700 pounds of recycling in four hours. In addition, we hosted the Second Annual Recycled Art Contest and received over 30 submissions for our Don't Trash Texas themed event. This contest raises awareness of waste reduction and how to reuse household items that would otherwise be thrown out. The winners of this contest are recognized at Great Tyler Cleanup in April. Again, we hosted the Christmas Tree Recycling Event in December and January, where local fishermen and wildlife management groups and individuals can pick up natural Christmas trees that residents drop off at Fun Forest Park and Golden Road Park. In addition, we started collecting broken string lights to partner with Caldwell Zoo. They have a fundraiser program called Lights for Lions, where the proceeds go to conservation in Africa for African lions. We also host the Recycling Tours at Downtown with a wide age group of students and adults. We educate on recycling process and the impact of waste reduction by recycling at home. One of my favorite programs is our Bee City USA affiliation. We have been with Bee City USA since 2019 and are considered a pollinator-friendly city. We aim to educate public importance, public on the importance of pollinators to the environment. We have our Honeybee Observation Hive, which has just been relocated from the Rose Garden to the grounds at the Goodman Grand Museum, and will be on display in its permanent home starting this Friday. We also hosted National Pollinator Week, where we had several events on Facebook. We had a bee trivia event at East Texas Brewing Company, and we also had the opportunity to display informational signage at Rice Road, location of Brookshire's Grocery Store. This signage played a vital role in us showing, or played a role in us showing the vital role of pollinators in our food sources. One in three bites of food that we eat here in the U.S. are pollinator-dependent, so if you like to eat, you can think of bee. We ended our Pollinator Week with Bee Day in the Garden. We had kids' activities and vendors, all celebrating bees and other pollinators, and guests were buzzing to learn more at workshops hosted by ETBA. Some additional highlights. We had our continuation of our Beauty and Business Award, where we recognize local businesses for their efforts to beautify property and keep it litter-free. We started the Beauty and Bloom Awards, which is the residential version of that competition and awards program, to celebrate outstanding landscaping or an obvious care and pride for individual residences. We also did a winter holiday decor competition for this award program in December on Facebook, helping to encourage visitors to explore Tyler during the holidays and enjoy the lights. Our Youth Advisory Committee has 12 high school and college-age members, and we just got our first middle age, middle school age member. They have their own Adopt a Spot, and they volunteer at Keep Tyler Beautiful events. They helped start our campus affiliate program, which has a goal to create Keep Tyler Beautiful affiliates at each Tyler school. Our first location was All Saints. We hope to expand this year. Keep Tyler Beautiful is also everywhere in 2023 with 12 speaking engagements, Fall Fest, Parks and Recs Fall Fest, library summer reading kickoff, and Boo at the Zoo. I also had an opportunity to speak at Keep America Beautiful's webinar series that was hosted by their CEO on impacts of littering on pollinators and pollination. As far as media coverage in 2023, we were covered 156 times with a reach of 13.7 million people. All in all, we had over 11,000 total volunteer hours with more than $350,000 in monetary value because of that. It is only because of our, the support and generosity of our sponsors, our city leaders, our board members, and our volunteers that we're able to make these achievements and be such a great program here and have such a large impact on the community. Last year was, been my last year of serving in the Keep Tyler Beautiful position, and it's a wonderful send-off to be able to do this today. I can't wait to see what the future holds for this program, and thank you for letting me speak today.
Aaron, before you go.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us about the man on the bottom left?
The man, I would love to talk to you about the man on the bottom left. The gentleman focused in the blue shirt, his name is Jim Cusonow? No, Jim, I said Jim Cusonow. What is his last name? It just fell out of my head.
You got the first name right.
I will get back to you on his last name. It's fallen out of my head, but his name's Mr. Jim. He is 93 years old. He moved here to Tyler about 20 years ago, and he has volunteered at about every single Keep Tyler Beautiful urban forestry event that we've done. He's also a active member of Lions Club. Recently, he has had to slow down at some of his events, but we actually named him our Volunteer of the Year a year ago and passed that on as a nomination for the Beautify Texas Awards. I'm going to keep passing that on because his story needs to be told. He is an amazing individual, and he just shows kind of the heart of Tyler from a volunteer aspect.
Chaney.
Chaney, thank you.
Chaney.
Chaney. Jim Chaney.
Well, you go to all these events and you see Jim, and you think this guy's going to pass out because it's 100 degrees, and it doesn't stop him. And he's just an example to all the young kids that are out there. They're seeing this, this older gentleman that loves volunteering. In the presentation, I thought this was going to be a quick meeting, but you've taken up three-quarters of it.
I apologize.
But it's, it's all good because it's stuff that makes Tyler what it is. So just thank you for a great presentation. Thank you for everything that you do. Can you tell us about who you have with you?
Yeah, today I have our new Keep Tyler Beautiful coordinator, Casey, and then I have several of our board members here as well. So I, like I said again, I definitely could not do what we have done without them, and we are really looking forward to things we've got planned this year.
Well, thanks for what you do.
Yep.
Keter.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Morning.
I'll do my job and speak the meeting back up, since I won't be boring you with numbers today. So you have item 01 before you request the city council consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 19, Section 19-33, responsibility for leakage credits. So I'll just give you a little background. So basically, what this ordinance pertains to is customers that have leakage in their home or on their property that's, that they're unaware of, that's not visible, I guess you could say. They can apply for leakage credit to the water utility billing office for three months, and the current ordinance allows us to credit about half of their usage that they went over on the leakage. If they repair, do the repairs and submit the bills and all that to the water business office. So the purpose of this ordinance is really two things. We want to define what constitutes a leakage credit, what is a concealed leak, and so in the ordinance, there's a better description of what constitutes that. And then the second item that we're trying to achieve in this ordinance is we can give up to a three-month leakage credit at half of the usage. We're going to take away that half usage and allow the utility billing office manager more discretion to work with the customers. You could have different severity as far as leakage, and so that allows the manager to work and provide better customer service to our customers. So having said that, it's staff's recommendation that city council consider adopting an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 19, Utilities, Article 3, Water and Sewer Service, Division A, Sections 19-33, Responsibility for Leakage Credit.
Any questions for Keter?
Yeah, so the concealed, concealed leak, right, that's the same. That didn't change?
Yes.
It's just more flexibility on the amount of the credit?
That's, that's correct.
Is it just on the water, or is it on the repair too?
It is the water, water usage, from my understanding. A lot of times, you have like a foundation leaks or irrigation system leaks that are, that are not visible to the customer, so.
Move to approve 01.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, seconded by McKellar. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Keter.
Thank you.
Jacob, M1.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
Morning.
My name is Jacob Yankar. I'm with Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm here to present Agenda Items M1 and M2, starting with Agenda Item, Agenda Item M1 for the Highway 271 and FM14 12-inch waterline extension engineering agreement with C.T. Brandon Corporation. So the city of Tyler water distribution system has over 750 miles of water lines throughout the city that provide drinking water to our residents. There's a portion of these water lines that is considered aging infrastructure, undersized, and dead-end mains that result in quality and performance issues. In the Distribution System section of the master plan, half identified numerous lines where looping and upsizing would result in system benefits in terms of pressure and the quality of drinking water. So this project involves extending a 12-inch diameter water line and connecting existing dead-end mains on Highway 271 and FM14 and on North Broadway. The pre-engineering estimates indicate that approximately 10,100 linear feet of water line will be required for the Highway 271 portion and 3,300 linear feet for the North Broadway portion. The existing water line on Highway 271 ends south of Loop 323, and that's where this project's going to, going to begin, and will extend that water line north past the loop before turning west to connect to the, to the 16-inch water line on FM14. North Broadway currently has multiple undersized mains that are not looped, and this project will replace, will replace the aging smaller lines with a new 12-inch water line and connect the dead ends together. This contract includes design easement acquisition for 26 private tracks, bidding and construction phase services. Engineering is expected to be complete by March 2025, and construction is projected to last 12 months. We have a pre-engineering construction cost estimate So I would like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute professional services contract in the amount of $420,285 with C.T. Brandon Corporation for the design and construction phase services of the Highway 271 and FM14 12-inch waterline extension project, which will be funded with ARPA and capital funds.
Any questions for Jacob?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, seconded by McKellar. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. M2.
So Agenda Item M2 is for the Lake Tyler Raw Water Pipeline Condition Assessment Engineering Agreement with HDR. So the Lake Tyler Raw Water Line transfers water from, from the lake to the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant and was originally constructed in the 1940s, with an additional line being constructed in the 60s, and both of them are still in use today. These pipelines transfer raw water from the intake for about six miles via a pressure pipe system to a location near UT Tyler where the pipeline switches to a gravity system, and then goes the remaining two miles to the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant. Golden Road is responsible for roughly half of the city of Tyler's drinking water at any given time throughout the year. So in the facilities master plan, half identified the raw water lines as the highest-risk equipment in the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant due to the impact on the plant if the lines are not operational. The combination of age and total length of the two pipelines, which is approximately 16 miles, has prompted TWU to take an in-depth look at these assets. Over the past 25 years, we've made at least seven to eight repairs on the raw water lines under emergency conditions. So the goal of this condition assessment is to transition into a more proactive approach with this critical infrastructure. In the proposed condition assessment, a detailed analysis of the existing pipelines will be conducted over the course of approximately 10 months. The desktop and condition assessment planning will consist of gathering all pertinent information from record drawings to field staff knowledge in order to create a thorough history record of these assets. It will also include a site visit, multiple site visits, to locate critical blow-off and air-release valves and assess site conditions. High-frequency pressure data will be collected throughout the length of the pipe, as well as a soil corrosivity analysis to determine if there are any locations along the pipeline that are exposed to more corrosive soils that would put the condition of the pipe at greater risk. Additionally, internal and external condition assessment will be performed along the pipe. An acoustic inspection equipment will be utilized for the internal inspection, and test pits may be excavated to evaluate the exterior of the pipe at locations determined to be of interest. All of these inspections and observations will be used to generate a final engineering analysis and recommendations report for the raw water pipelines. So I would like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $980,659 with HDR for the Lake Tyler Raw Water Pipeline Condition Assessment and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
All right. Any questions for Jacob?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by McKellar, seconded by Wynn. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
M3.
Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
So Agenda Item M3 is consent decree related. It's for the Group 6 Construction Award for the Group 6 Traditional Package. In August of 2023, city council approved an engineering services agreement with Langin for the Group 6 Consent Decree Design. This design included 35 manholes and 599 defect locations, which is approximately 35, 45,000 linear feet of gravity main. This package is going to be split up into two, into a traditional construction award and a specialty. This is for the traditional construction award. As you can see, the basins that are in red, that's primarily the area that this Group 6 will be working in, which is sort of central and eastern Tyler. So this traditional package includes sanitary sewer rehab using internal point repairs, internal section liner, open cut point repairs, installation of new manholes and access chambers, as well as about 7,000 linear feet of pipeline replacement by open cut. Bids were opened and read aloud on May 28, 2024, and we received a total of four bids. The low bidder, CNA, is the recommended contractor. So I request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with CNA Construction in the amount of $7,22,462.14 for the consent decree, Group 6 Traditional Package, bid 24019.
Kate, that couldn't worry telling that map what part of Tyler that's in. Where is that?
Let's go back to it. It's, it's really like on both west and east sides of, it's inside the loop. Some of it goes out, some of it goes out to the east of the loop. Most of it is inside the loop, just north of the loop and Broadway on the west and east.
Got you. Any questions for Kate? Move to approve M3.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, seconded by McKellar. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Will you spend some money?
Yeah. So our Agenda Item M4, this is actually the Group 6 Specialty Package Construction Award. So this construction project includes sewer rehab using pipe bursting, coating of manholes, bench and invert reconstruction, and noncoating on, noncoating tasks on manholes. There's approximately 20,000 linear feet of pipe bursting.
Is that, is that a man?
Mm-hmm.
It's in a manhole.
Yep. That is a man. Or a woman. I'm not sure.
What's he doing?
What's he doing? It looks like he's coating the interior of the manhole.
Wouldn't want that job.
They pulled him out, right?
Hmm?
They did pull him out.
Yeah, they did pull him out. They didn't.
Okay.
I think the mayor's worried he's still there.
So for this specialty package, bids were opened and read aloud on May 28, and two bids were received. The low bidder, Lopez Utilities, is the recommended contractor. They have done work for the city before, as has CNA. Request this, I request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Lopez Utilities in the amount of $1,731,333 for the consent decree, Group 6 Specialty Package, bid 24020.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve M4.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, seconded by McKellar. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Kate.
All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Do we need to approve anything, or approve what's presented?
Move to approve this.
Second.
Got a motion by McKellar, seconded by Haney. Any further discussion? Also, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City manager's report.
So Mayor and Council, for this morning, we're kind of going to give an update on the storm, both as far as what happened during the storm from last Monday night, as well as kind of the recovery that continues. We also have Tom Trimble from Encore, who will give a bit of a presentation as well on what they saw and how their recovery efforts have gone in relationship to provide, restoring and providing electrical service here in Tyler. So on Monday night, well, to start with, the disaster declaration was signed off by the mayor for this event. This is part of what we're doing, making sure as far as our paperwork in relationship to FEMA and possible reimbursements in the future, making sure that that has been put out there, that the mayor has had the disaster proclamation for this event, as well as asking for assistance and aid from the state of Texas. And so that has been taken, assigned, and been declared. To kind of put it in perspective, so on Monday night, between the hours of 7:30 p.m. and 11:30 p.m., our dispatch office received 1,531 calls into 911. Because of the northwest winds, as they came in, the severity of them, it caused for, throughout the city, just people calling in to, to ask about just true broken trees. the city, just people calling in to ask about just broken trees, concerns they had, safety and well-being. And so our police officers put eyes on each of those 1,500 calls that came in between that period. I don't know, I know Chief Tolliver's with us, or actually, I don't know that Chief Tolliver's with us. There he is. Is that a record chief in relationship to, that y'all have ever seen between as far as time-wise? So that was kind of a record high for a number of dispatch calls that have come into 911 in the period of times such as that. Fire was also working those dispatch calls, had the Assistant Fire Chief Kelly Atkinson was there to be able to assist with helping out on those. We also recommended to people as also, if they, because so many people were wondering, well, if I have trees down, I have trees down on lines, where do I call? Encore was overloaded as well on their calls, and so we've recommended to people, call 911, get it, that way we can be able to, again, have officer have eyes on it and be able to make an assessment and then be able to get that to Encore for them to do work on. Our streets department had 142 streets closed as of the morning of June 4th, that Tuesday morning. We were finally able to get, you know, when the sun comes up and able to kind of get an idea of what the actual city looked like, just because of the amount of outages that we had throughout the city. And through that, all 142, except for one issue that's still remaining over at Lawler and Bolivar that is being resolved and worked on, but we were able to get those streets up and running by the end of last week. For the work orders, we had 711 calls for service. That was trees, sinkholes, drainage issues that came in. Of those, 620 work orders created, and of those 620, 334 of those have been completed. That means that have been, primarily most of those have been, those 334 are trees that were cut and have been removed in order to be able to get the street open and area cleaned off. Our Parks and Water Service Center also sent staff to help cut trees and open streets. And a big piece that we were able to get through the state was assistance through the Texas Forestry Service, where we had multiple saw crews, as they're called, coming in with chainsaws to be able to open up many of our streets. We were able to send them out to Lake Tyler as well because of the city-controlled streets at Lake Tyler to be able to get that area opened up. And so saw crews were being able to be dispatched throughout the city. And so the average number is about 25 each day of Texas Forestry Service members that we had working throughout the city. All city crews were working on clearing roadways and removal of debris from roadways, and the street department operated a total of four brush trucks to remove debris. We also had at least one contractor, A.E. Scholl, contacted us very quickly to be able to provide assistance in relationship to debris removal also. And so we were able to take advantage of that and to get that moving. I'll talk a little bit more about the debris removal in a minute and some of the things that will be coming to council for action as well as just the work that we're doing towards it. On the inner traffic side, we had 46 intersections that lost power during the storm. All the generators are now gone and everything's on Encore Power, but that was one of being able to kind of get especially the amount of traffic signals that were out and for some of them, not knowing how much we're going to be, getting generators there and keeping them fueled became an issue. And then as of then Tuesday morning also, another storm blew through, which caused further damage, and so some of the intersections that we had back to power, we had to go back and put generators on again. Parks, their crews were primarily last week assigned to streets to work on completing the work orders after the storm to getting our streets open. Now they've gone back to help clean up in our parks. Seven out of 24 parks have been affected, that were affected have been cleaned up. And so kind of put it, there was 24 parks that had a significant amount of debris damage in them, and we only have, I think, 33 parks. What was that?
28.
28? Did we lose some parks?
28 parks to the cemeteries.
Oh, okay. So I guess I can, anyway, so every, pretty much nearly every park had some level of damage to it throughout the city. And so 52 trees have been, were down throughout our parks. Volunteers have already cleaned up Bergfeld Park and Faulkner Park. Also, our park staff made sure to go ahead Emmett Scott Park and was it Nobly Young that we were having? What's this, the other one that we want to make sure is open for this week?
Emmett J. Scott.
Emmett J. Scott, but for the playground program. So we want to be able to make sure that that was up and operational for this week for our kids in those neighborhoods. Also damaged the parks facilities throughout, light fixtures, fences, you can drive by, especially Rose Hill Cemetery, see the damage there. Over at the Goodman Museum, that's going to take a while just because those were some very large trees that came down, and so those are going to, we have to get experts to come in and kind of help clean those up. We did have some headstone damage in Rose Hill Cemetery. We think those will be able to be recovered from and be able to fix, put back up and have, without having to replace those. For City Hall, we did have a little bit of roof damage and flooding here at City Hall. Our IT department did, there was leaking that was happening in the server room, and some of our IT staff were able to get up here on Monday night to start as far as mopping and getting that cleaned up to make sure that that IT infrastructure was not impacted by the storm. And so on Solid Ways side, this is now kind of a part where they, you know, were able to jump in. We have 118 work orders for special pickups as of June 10th, so Monday afternoon. There were more that will be coming in. A lot of our media posts, people who are asking about their private property brush damage or trees that they want to have removed, we are putting out information about that, and I'll talk again about that debris cleanup when we talk about next steps. We have three brush trucks that are still assisting streets crews with the removal of debris from roads. That's still a big priority we have of getting the roads, the stuff we cut out and cut down, getting that removed. But one of those brush trucks is back with Solid Ways, and normal collection was resumed as of Thursday of last week for, to be able to go pick up. Airport did have some damage. There was a perimeter fence that was damaged, and that has been fixed, and also the jet bridge was damaged. And so we're using a backup on that one, but that one still needs to be fixed. And so for Communications Department, they jumped in and we had, we were able to send out 31 press releases between June 3rd and June 10th. The number of social media posts, which is a big way, especially with our Facebook page and some of ours are social media sites, a big way for us to communicate with our citizens. 109 social media posts during this past week, and accounts with hundreds of responses to residents' questions as they come in. And then right now, there's a big push right now on press releases containing information on iStat reporting, which is the state's reporting system, FEMA assistance, department updates, and a current list of community resources that are being offered through our churches, our service organizations, of trying to help kind of channel that through so people can know who they can be able to go to for assistance. So on the next steps piece of this, the debris cleanup is our big focus right now, both on personal property and private property, how best we can take care of those. Trees, limbs and branches less than three, five, four feet long and weighing 50 pounds or less can be curbside for free. This is part of just the normal pickup that's done, they're twice a week at their homes and residences. If you have something that's larger than that, especially for people who have trees that they've been able to cut up and they cut up themselves or didn't have a contractor come in, for those, we are having a special pickup that you will need to request, and there's a fee associated with that, that you can be able to then go into Solid Ways to be able to do. There's a form online that you can fill out to be able to get that in, and you can also call Solid Ways and schedule that pickup. The piece that we want to try to make sure and kind of setting expectations on this is because of the amount of damage and the amount of stuff that we're having to take care of on the public property side, if you are concerned about that, you know, this is not going to be a very speedy matter in relationship to private pickup of tree debris that you may have with your property. If you are concerned about just the standard time of how long it will take to get to you or, you know, especially what's sitting on, your grass dying, those type of issues, private contractors are available and can be also be there for assistance to be able to help remove that in an expedient manner. But if you do have time or you can, and the city will probably be a less expensive cost than what you'd get for a private contractor, then you can, like I said, file with the city and be able to, we can come get you, you know, and just typically what we're saying is about $20 per grapple load in order to have the debris removed from your private property. During the storm recovery period, we also, City of Tyler residents, if they have trailers or access to trailers, they can, with their current water bill permitted, take one load of any size per household to the landfill for a fee of $15 as part of our agreement with Republic Services. There was a bit of a mix-up as we were finding out, kind of at the end of last week or early last week, where the landfill was charging a bit more than the $15. It was kind of on size. We did go back to Republic and say, and work out a deal with them to be able to have it for just $15 for that trailer to be able to drop off. So there won't be anything that's charged in excess of that for our citizens to be able to go out there to the landfill to drop off their tree debris for themselves. A big piece now that we're moving to is also FEMA assistance, and this, while on the public side, we're working through on our documentation and some different parts to be able to make sure that the city can be reimbursed for what it can, and some different things we're looking, having to do with that. The individual assistance is the message that we're trying to really push out now for people to be able to file for FEMA for their own reimbursement that comes separate from the city. We don't know what, you know, what FEMA may reimburse you at or how that happens, but that is something to where we want to be able to link our citizens up with FEMA in order to be able to make those requests for reimbursement of their own personal costs and concerns that they have. FEMA is currently, and I think will probably hopefully be able to announce in the next day or two, where they will put a disaster recovery center in Tyler, and that will be essentially a one-stop shop for FEMA for someone who has a claim that they want to make for life and safety type of costs that they had to incur in relationship to the storm to be able to go to, to be able to handle that. And so like I said, it's, we've been working with Smith County. They are good partners with the city and being able to find a location that works for both Tyler and for Smith County to be able to have. Like I said, I hopefully either maybe by the end of this day or tomorrow, be able to make that formal announcement on that location. FEMA personnel have also already started as of yesterday morning going door-to-door. The iStat, what we were pushing out last week, which is the Texas Department of Emergency Management, that information, it still needs to be put on there and so that we can be able to have those details and information, well, the state does, but FEMA is able to use that as well as other people who are making claims. And currently, in Smith County, there's about 2,347 FEMA applications that have been completed for, and they will take that to be able to kind of look at where are those areas that looks like were impacted, and then they will go do door-to-door surveying to see if any type of assistance is needed and to help start the process in relationship, so that we'll make sure people know that, you know, there's a FEMA, people usually wear a FEMA vest as well as a name tag, and so those are there to be able to talk to and to work with on those issues. We're also helping them find different events to be able to locate at. It's a 60-day timeline that they have from kind of when the storm to the end of the filing piece. So that's the part that we want to make sure that, you know, that's kind of, you know, moving in a very quick manner to make, to help people understand and to get linked up with FEMA so they can be able to hit that 60-day window for their application. Documentation is an important part on the individual side as much as it is on the public side. And so, you know, if for, you know, people take pictures of the damage, people take pictures, kind of notes, all those type of things is very important because FEMA will be looking at that as they look at the application for possible reimbursement of costs. And so that pretty well covers my notes. Like I said, Tom's here as well, wanted to kind of give an update to the council in relationship to Encore's work on the storm. You know, it's an interesting piece. We had over 1,000 linemen in Tyler during the past week. If you drove by the Rose complex, it was a whole village of linemen, the trucks were going on, they did incredible work. But Mayor, if you're okay with me having Tom come forward and try and give a little update?
Ed, as Tom's coming forward, on the 60 days, is it 60 days from the date of the storms or 60 days after the expiration of the disaster declaration, or what is that 60-day window?
60 days from June 6 to apply for the internal assistance, or individual assistance. Pardon?
I'm sorry, I have one, Mr. Mayor, one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said $20 per, what was that term that you used?
Grapple load. So especially because of the amount of, the brush trucks have like a grappler, I keep using a claw.
Oh, that little tub thing that's?
Yes, ma'am. And so just kind of the pickup piece that they will have.
Thank you.
One last question. Ed, on the $15 fee with the current water bill that you can take to the landfill, how long will that be in place?
Until we tell them otherwise.
Okay.
And so, you know, we'll probably have it in play for at least probably about two months, and we'll see kind of how, what's still going on out there and monitor that.
Okay.
Tom?
Mayor, Council, Tom Trimble, Encore Electric. I'm the East Region Manager for Customer Service for Encore. First thing I want to do is thank y'all. Each and every one of y'all reached out to me during the last couple of weeks to express your concern and your well wishes for not only me but for our linemen. I thank you for your thoughts and prayers through all this. Ed and his team have been nothing but spectacular. Chief Goble, Chief Tolliver, the Roads Department, LaSara, Leanne, they've all been just spectacular. And the fact of the matter is, is we couldn't have restored power as quickly as we did without them. The staging area they allowed us to set up at the Berkshire Center was vital to restoration efforts. And I'll go through some of the numbers here in a little bit of why it was so vital to us, but without that, there's absolutely no way we could have restored power in the timeframe we did. To understand kind of the magnitude of it, I kind of want to go back to the first of May, if that's okay, because what we dealt with over the last month has been nothing but storm after storm after storm after storm, and it kind of culminated in this last storm this past week. But if you remember in the first of May, Houston got hit by that big storm, that big windstorm that knocked out about 1.6 million people out of power. The next week, we got hit here. Part of that storm, the series of storms that came through here, there was a tornado that went through Emerald Bay. On May 22nd, we lost power to about 9,000 folks in East Texas at about 10:00 PM. Got almost everybody restored. I think we were down to less than 200 people to restore, and on May 23rd, we lost, we had another storm come through that knocked out 7,700 people at 7:45 PM. That's the one that I believe had the Emerald Bay tornado. So we, we're rallying the troops day after day after day, had almost everybody back on that could receive power, and then on May 23rd, we got hit, or May 24th, we got hit by a storm, knocked out 9,100 people in East Texas. And that was at 9:00 PM. So we rallied everybody within about 24 hours, we had almost everybody back up. Within 48 hours, everybody that could receive power did. On May 28th, we had another storm that went through Dallas. I'm sorry, May 23rd to 24th, Temple also got hit by two F2 tornadoes, two of them, knocked out 67,000 people down there. That's also Encore territory. We had contractors from all over the country going there to help them. Contractors had gone down to Houston, some of our contractors were in Houston, to help them, shifted them to Temple, and on the 28th, Dallas got hit. 650,000 people went out of power up in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. That same storm hit Tyler, hit East Texas. We had 56,000 people out from that same storm here in East Texas, and about half of those were in the Tyler area, about 27,000 were in the Tyler area. And so that is, that's the significance leading up to June 3rd when we got hit. In about a span of 45 minutes, we lost 68,000 customers to this storm all over Smith County. It peaked, it peaked that night at about 8:00 PM at 72,000 customers in Smith County that were out. You think about that and the magnitude of what was going on. I talked to Ed real quick that night. We, we were able to deploy two generators that Encore has to the sewer plant, and shortly after that, we got out to the wastewater, or the water intake structure out on Lake Tyler. We knew the damage out there was significant, in particular, the, those two places, there was catastrophic damage. One of them, the water intake, had over 15 spans of wire just laying on the ground and over 13 poles that had to be replaced to get out to that side. So we knew it was going to take a long time, got a generator on them, got them back up and running as quickly as we could. Over on the other side, on 46, both feeds that would go into that sewer plant had catastrophic damage on them. We started working on one side to get one feed in, got the generator on it, were able to run them for a day, I think a day or day and a half while, while we were getting that fixed as well. We, of the 72,000, we knocked out about 30,000 customers in 24 hours, getting them back on, getting the power back on to them. on, getting the power back on to them. Within 48 hours, we had gotten it down below 20,000, and then another storm hit. And it knocked it back up to 32,000 customers. And so it just, every time you were making really, really good progress on these storms throughout the month, you get hit by something else that came through. It was just storm after storm after storm. And so by the end of last week, by Friday night, essentially, everybody could receive power, which means they didn't have damage to their house, that we, that we knew that they were off, everything was good. Then essentially, by midnight of Friday, we had everybody on that could receive power from that original storm. So, so we're real proud of everything we did. Most importantly, every one of the folks for, that was under Encore, our staff, our contractors, VM contractors, everybody else went home safe after this. You know, minor little, little scratches and things like that, but everybody went home the way they showed up to work. So the safety record of our guys, we were led over here in East Texas. Our distribution manager, Steve Barnes, I wouldn't trade him for anybody. He is one of the best in the business at restoring power to people. He did a phenomenal job. Glenn King on our transmission side did a phenomenal job. We lost five substations due to trees falling into transmission lines that we had to clean up and get those substations hot before we could get the distribution lines hot. So that the amount of damage of this one, it is the worst storm Smith County has ever seen per the damage on our system. The one that hit Dallas was the worst that Dallas County had ever seen per the damage on the system. At the peak, we had over approximately 150 Encore staff that were in Tyler, working, working on projects, approximately 300 crews. Now, that's overhead crews, contract crews, Encore crews, everybody. A crew is made up of anywhere between three to five people. So you start thinking about it. We had over 300 overhead crews working in this area. We had approximately 400 VM crews, and VM crews can be anywhere between two people to four people. We had approximately 75 damage evaluators, contract damage evaluators are going out and they were, if we had wire down or something like that, they were checking on that. By the way, the dispatch, 911 dispatch is such a great way for us to track wire down because they have a number that they call us on. So you call 911, you report the wire down, they call us, that we have a spot on the map that we have to go to and go look at. And so that's what these damage evaluators help us with. And we ran those guys out of, out of East Texas, out of our office here in Tyler, and it was a phenomenal success on that. Heather and her group were sending this list of any, anything that they had that was wire and trees, and we had those, those crews going out there and checking that wire to make sure if it was Encore, we're going to get there. If it wasn't Encore, if it was just cable internet or something like that, just do what you need to do to get the road open. That was, we, we looked at over 100 sites from, from Ed and his team, and like I said, they were spectacular through this whole thing. We couldn't ask for a better city partner than what y'all have with Ed. It just, it was amazing. Poles replaced. This is why the staging area was so important. And having an area where we could have materials and everything, we replaced approximately 400 poles in this area. We replaced approximately, almost 200 transformers. We have, we replaced over 200 crossarms. And then we, other things like regulators, capacitor banks, stuff that's on the system to keep everything, all the balance, equal lightning arresters, things like that, we replaced approximately 400 of those. Here's the big one, spans of wire we worked on, over 2,300 spans of wire that we had to do work on. 1,400 of those had, had trees in them that we had to cut out before we could do the work. And then we deployed two generators throughout the storm. So the sheer magnitude of this storm beats anything that I've ever seen at Encore in this area. I don't remember anything that has impacted this area quite like this did. And the reason is because storm after storm after storm after storm. When you add all these up, you know, I don't have the numbers for all of them as far as what we've replaced, but just in the last month, I'm, I've never seen anything like it. I hope I don't in my career. I hope we never have to deal with this, but, but that's kind of what we were facing over the last week. And like I said, thank you to each and every one of y'all. Your thoughts and prayers through the week were just priceless. And I can't thank the city, the county, the Sheriff's Department, the county commissioners, the county constables, we're all working with us. It wasn't just Tyler, it was Lindell, it was Chandler, White House, Chapel Hill, Edom, Van, everybody, you know, Athens, Maidbank, Canton. We've got everything out here, and we try to take care of everybody, but specifically, Tyler was hit the hardest out of anybody. I'll answer, any questions y'all have, but?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I'll, thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. You drive around the day after the storm, and you see people on their roofs with trees that have cut houses in half.
That's right.
And see your guys out there cutting limbs. I mean, it makes me emotional. It was a big deal, not just for us, but for residents that lost homes. And for your guys to be out there and have these people at the mall, at the Berkshire Conference Center, 1,000 people coming here to take care of our community, and every one of those people going home safe, and every resident in this Tyler, in the city, and having no deaths, by the grace of God. And property damage can be repaired. And, and we're going to do what we can, but I pray for patients from the residents, for our citizens, it's going to be a slow process. And I want people to be kind. And when people get on Facebook and make their lashes out at the city or you or whatever, just take a deep breath. Ed tells me, don't take a deep breath. And I ask that for people all over our community. We are in this together. You know, we have crews out Saturday. 60 people from one congregation went out and went to neighborhoods where people could not afford to cut their own trees and cut their trees. The Texas Baptist men have crews for two weeks here in Tyler, going out to different neighborhoods to help people that can't, don't have the funds and resources to do it themselves. And so everybody's pitching in, and I just want everyone to know, we, we care, but we just, let's all be in this together and love one another. So I'm going to stop there. If anybody wants to make a comment, please feel free to.
You said it well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
No, I think we're lucky to have Tom as a partner at Encore. Thank you for what you did.
Like I said, thank you all for the kind words throughout this whole thing. One thing, and I forgot to say this, there still is some tree debris that we cut down during the storm. There's some wire that we, we had to cut loose, transformers that we had to replace that might still be sitting out there. Over the next, you know, seven to 10 days, we're going to be going through and picking all that up, making sure everything's clean. We, you know, we had so many people out at the, out at the staging area, the brushless complex, there were some little dings and a little, a little damage. We're going to make sure that that gets fixed as soon as possible and so that that looks pristine again. But I can't even imagine how long it would have taken if we didn't have that. We'd still be working on stuff, but having the ability to put that, that material, bring it in and put it down and, and have it easy access right there was stellar. In the community, we had people coming by, setting up at the staging area, cooking burgers for the folks that came through. Camp V was cooking hot dogs. Green Acres Church was, they were creating goodie bags with snacks and water and driving around and just finding linemen to give them stuff. One of the things, one of the reports we got from, from the folks that were in from other states, we, we had people in from eight, eight, I believe, eight other states, as far away as South Carolina that were helping us. Kentucky, Tennessee, Mississippi, Louisiana, Oklahoma, Arkansas, all those folks were coming in to help us to make sure we got power restored. But one of the things, comments we got back is, this community is amazing.
Yeah.
We've never been in a place where we've been treated so nicely. So thanks to all the citizens, we've done something right here in Tyler, and, and that's a great, that's on y'all's leadership. What we have here in Tyler is amazing. I don't ever want to change it. I don't ever want to go anywhere else. I want to be here attire attire because this place is just spectacular. So thank y'all for the leadership, thank the community for what they did for us to get the power back on. Power is an essential part of life these days. You've got to have it. And, and so we, we're doing everything we can to make sure that that, that's done right. So thank y'all.
Well, Tom, I'm sorry, you may not know the answer to this, but what kind of cost has this cost us so far?
The cost, the cost is still being evaluated, but it's significant. So we're, it's, there's a lot of material that goes into that. And so, but, but that's just part of doing business here.
Well, here's to the team effort.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
All right. We are adjourned.